All right, it is three o'clock, so we're going to close this meeting. If you would like to use the floor.
Yes, Melvin, here.
Here.
Yeah, here.
Here. Our second round of this will be a follow-up conference. Members of the board are welcome and invited to address the board for a moment. Speakers are discharged from using the follow-up conference. Here, if something concerns about staff members, they might have to leave the follow-up conference period. It's not suitable for one factoring or resolution of speed. Rather, we encourage members of color who have concerns about six of the district employees to follow district guidelines. That is assumed handling. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. Also note that it does not cost America. The board will respond with follow-up comments. The best way to respond to the members of the board is by emailing us at schoolboard@district65.net. Do we have any questions?
Um, yes. All the first three people, Miles Levin, Tom, and then Silvio.
Hello.
Hello.
Is that all created?
No.
Just start.
But your voice will be cut after your发言.
Just raise your voice.
Okay. Hi, I'm Miles Levin. I'm a senior at Evanston Township High School. I have Lincoln and Nichols at District 65. I'm the hub coordinator of Easton Sunrise, so we're a kind of action organization. I don't know, hopefully you've heard of us. I did not expect to be here today. I just left my environmental science class. Actually, it was a fellow student to get here. I'm pretty shocked by what's happening right now. I didn't have time to prepare anything. I think it's ironic that I was, I left school to come to this. I'm supposed to be being educated, learning about environmental science, and yet I'm here fighting for my community and for the environment. I can tell you that we have a lot of support in Evanston. I've come across a huge community of passionate climate activists in this community. We care a lot. I coordinated with Karen Beretta, the District 65 Sustainability Coordinator, many times. We, at ETHS, I don't know if you're familiar, actually hired a sustainability coordinator a couple of years ago, John Crawford. And I guess I can speak to that a little bit. He has been an invaluable resource for us students to connect with administrators. We just passed the Green Deal for ETHS, the third Green Deal for schools to pass in the country. We have benefited tremendously from having a sustainability coordinator, connecting us to administrators, and administrators to enact the change that we need in our schools. I think the decision to get rid of a sustainability coordinator is kind of tragic, honestly, given the time, given how much, how much money, how many resources, how much passion needs to be put into the climate crisis right now. It seems like an absolute travesty and a disaster to go through with cutting a position that is so vital for our community. So, I'll just say, you know, we have a lot of community support by running the organization of 20 students. I have countless people that I've interacted with, Jerry, Rachel, Becky, you know, we really care and we're in fight for this, and I really hope that you reject this tragedy. So, thank you.
Hi, thanks for recognizing me to speak. My name is Tom Mulver. I'm a 20-year resident of South Evanston, the Dawgs, the Shoot, the ETHS parent, PTA member, in my day, and asserted about 15 years ago on a District 65 Citizens Advisory Panel during the last cash crunch the district was facing. So, from that experience, I know the decisions that you're making are not easy, and they're deeply considered. And so, I thank you for your service, and I'm not very criticized, but rather pleading for reconsideration on the decision of eliminating the sustainability coordinator position. I'll leave it to others, and I think Milo has done a good job of this, to discuss the signal that this sends about our priorities to the community, and it's not a good signal. But I'm going to focus on the fiscal table, because this is a fiscal decision. This is not really cost reduction. This is the abandonment of a future form of investment that is succeeding on many fronts. And I think you, I hope you're all aware of those fronts, and I'm not going to enumerate them, but research it, because it is an investment that is succeeding wildly. It's a significant response to a bad quarter if we hadn't fired its entire research department, sort of like aiming a cannon in the wrong direction. This single position creates enormous leverage for a relatively small investment in a relatively mid-level salary. It's concentrating and amplifying impact on experiences of hundreds of building staff, central staff, students, parents, and it connects the school district powerfully to District 202, to District 202's student activists, and to the city's sustainability activists. So, by removing this position, you're not just removing a single brick in the wall, you're kind of taking away a keystone on which many other structures depend. Efforts for recycling, composting, environmental education, all manner of parent-student engagement are once again going to be fragmented across many buildings. Lots of individual parents, lots of individual teachers, a few individual students, trying to make something happen without coordination, without communication. Vital communication links will disappear. Time and money will be wasted on uncoordinated efforts, instead, guided by no particular strategy. And this is, at the same time, we're charged to prepare a generation of students for adult lives in a world where in most fields, climate, climate awareness, environmental science, all of that are going to be both increasingly politically critical and economically beneficial to those students. Those are, that's where jobs will be, that's where careers will be made, that's where discoveries will be made. Moreover, eliminating the position is to squander incredible piece of good fortune in the person of Karen Beretta, whose rare combination of technical expertise, communication skills, diplomacy, and hands-on action orientation is unlikely to be matched or replaced at twice the price. So, I'm assuming that in the context of the next year's budget, allocating available funds to your priorities, that this is a dug deal. So, if that's the case, if that's not the case, please reconsider before finalizing. If it is, however, I encourage you to seek some alternative means to fund the position, and I'll offer personally to help find those means. Thank you for listening.
My name is Silvio Voler. I also do not have time for preparing comments today. I did not also have time to prepare comments today. However, the news of a sustainability position at District 65 has brought me to the podium, and I am a part of the District 65 Climate Action Teams. We've been working with the district. My kids are now in seventh grade, and since they were kindergarten, so many, many years, we fought really hard to get a sustainability coordinator position at the district. We were hands, feet on the ground, and moving trays and getting composting in every school. We saw that, once we were out of that school, that effort would not continue, so that the sustainability coordinator position was super important to continue the work from an upper management level, from top down. We've written many letters, I've stood here many times, I've presented, we've brought in Mayor Biss to meet with previous superintendents, and we've created recommendations, and the ideas were to create a permeating culture of sustainability that supports the education of environmental stewards and enables the district to achieve our goals. We request the hiring of a sustainability coordinator. This was written 85 years ago. This leader would work to embed sustainability into the culture of District 65 by designing and implementing a measure of sustainable practices aimed at reducing the district's carbon footprint. Evanston is a community of people that are very focused on the environment, and I believe that there are ways to save money in other places. This is not the place to do it. Karen Beretta has been instrumental in going around the entire district and making a cohesive plan. Her initiatives are vital to lowering our carbon footprint, more importantly, turn the school environment into living lab, helping students understand that they can be agents of change and therefore part of the solution. This is engaging with children, this is changing the curriculum, this is informing them and making sure that they know that they are, have a voice, have a power to be effective leaders in the community, all the stuff that they're hearing, to not be weighed down by it, to be actively required. Thank you.
Oh. We have three more speakers. Rachel Rosner. Jack Moore.
Hi, I'm Rachel Rosner. I'm a past president of Climate Action Evanston. I am on the sustainability committee at District 202. And back in the day, I was on the sustainability committee at 65, when my kids were still here, which at the time was comprised of board members, administrators, teachers, and community members who were, it was brilliant, I loved to see that. Also, a product of the district myself, my two kids came through. I'd love to see a third generation coming through, but truly, my kids are not sure about having kids, because they're freaked out about climate access. So, I'm the program manager now for a program called It's Our Future, supporting high school students, including Milo, in advocating for climate policy in their schools and communities. I use the term climate justice very deliberately, because that is where core, the climate crisis is a justice issue, and I know that is a core problem for our community. I had the privilege of taking high school students to the United Nations Climate Conference three different times, where we meet people from all over the world who are really facing the impacts of this crisis in front of us. And as a community that can take a global view, this should be important to us, right? We care about people outside of Evanston, but it has been, climate justice is an issue as well, right? We saw the air quality issues last year, which for most of us with air conditioning, health insurance, it was a nuisance, but for others, you know, black kids die of asthma 10 times more than white kids. That's just one example of the kinds of climate injustices that are happening, and we know that it's those who are the greatest resources that are causing this crisis. Also, good to, mental health process among you, the process of care and sugar awareness, and a majority of young people say they really struggle with anxiety and despair around the climate crisis, and fight adult inaction as a major cause, right? That kind of dissonance between what they're seeing, witnessing in the world, and the response of the adults who are responsible for their care spirals there. So, here we have an opportunity, right? The sustainability coordinator has worked on several projects that empower you to take action and change the culture of your school. Cafeteria composting, a true recycling program. My kids are like, I don't recycle, let's throw it away. That's changing now. Supporting school gardens, planting trees and native plants. She's worked with the curriculum committee, the curriculum team here to try and promote climate literacy, so that people understand the issue and feel empowered to do something about it before. So, the message of eliminating this position is that their future is not a priority for the district. I know the district has that. We took financial pick-up. Typically, sustainability, this is a kernel, typically sustainability coordinators are able to save their district a minimum of their, the equivalent of their own salary in a year. But if that didn't happen, in the last year review, why that didn't happen, and figure out how they can happen, don't take this egregious step backwards. District 202 was following in footsteps of Park District 200, and their K-8 District 97 has also adopted a comprehensive climate policy. Evanston should be a leader. Every child, every day, whatever it takes, means providing healthy, renewable climate protection.
Hello, one, Jack, you're in the culture of Climate Action Evanston. Here on behalf of trying to keep the sustainability coordinator to be the founding of the district. And like Tom said, I acknowledge it's a very tough decision, and I belong to be making these decisions as a true scientist, so thank you for being the people that showed up to try and deal with this with good faith with the district. Like many of the folks that have come up here to speak, and you see it's filled up with a few chairs we have for the follow-up conference, you know, a few we have on Friday, is that this is a really tremendous loss, and something that all of us are really shocked by, to be honest, when we found out, it's almost early this morning, I got a text about this. We're losing a very skilled employee, Karen Beretta, who's really meshed for what she's doing, what she's cultivating at the district. We're losing momentum. This is not something that we can just cut out and then reinstate a year later and not be able to gain everything that we've been working towards this last six months to a year. This is a loss of understanding, that this is something that's central to education. This is not something that is known by districts around the country, but we're starting to progress here in Evanston. This is special. This is what kids are going to deal with for the future. This is the world they're going to inherit, this is the jobs they're going to have, and we really lose out, I think the biggest thing that happened, gives me is, you know, working with someone who's just come out of house two years ago, that our student activists that have already been, from ETHS to middle schools, that have benefited and all of this, they are so gifted, they're so skilled. Milo's a great example, it turns out, makes this, Jack, make sure you can say that this is a justice issue, because this is something that people need to be educated about along their heritage, especially those people that have the most disadvantage. We owe it to them, and tell them about the role that they're inherited. And this is really a loss of future candidates. Who knows the small actions that people take that will inspire a child who might become a political activist or a scientist, or someone that's a leader in sustainability. And what I kind of want to just focus on is probably the approach from Climate Action Evanston to a community organizing, political powers, and there's never been a way to give any support for this issue right now, because District 202, just being the first school district in the country to have creative deals for schools, and we will have no choice. We are going to our best, certainly, Earthworm, we have almost a dozen lined up, we have our climate platform, we're going to be showing it to everyone that you talk to. We will have no choice because to make this jump is a very tough task, because this is that important to us. See that they showed up here today, showed up from this town, my pants are soaked, I had to work a job, I had to screw the meetings, I had to come here. It's that important, and we will have to, whether it's through emails, on the halls, whether it's your public comment, that these work meetings, it's not the best use of our time, it's not the best use of your time. We want to expect your time to initiate, you have the time to do all the other stuff that we work on. And I think that I can just kind of pause this meeting, I'm somewhat frustrated that this meeting happened, I'm sure there's just five reasons, why is this meeting happening at 3:00 PM on Friday, on Tuesdays? Because I'm sure I missed something, but to me, it seems a slight sneak, and it just kind of breaks the trust that we have for this board. And so, I hope, I really urge you to consider this decision, figure out if there's alternatives, we know it's a sticky situation, be transparent, we're here to help, we're here to brainstorm, and let's make sure that this stays on the books forever. This is a thing that we should, you know, so thank you.
Chris?
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really bad with the key, and I'm, it makes me very nervous, but I feel very committed to the volunteer work that I've gotten with garden clubs and green teams, and I think that I've been given the opportunity to do, you know, 100-plus hours worth of volunteer work in the city and the district because of the response I've got from the different groups I've reached out to looking for what to do, and in my community. I was never really something to volunteer before, I moved to Evanston, I found a lot of opportunities to do so through my son's school, throughout the district, and I think that the removal of a sustainability coordinator would undermine what I think a lot of us have done, and it's something that I'm going to be paying attention to very closely when I decide how I'm going to utilize my volunteer hours.
Okay, great, so first of all, I just want to publicly thank all of you for taking the time to come here today. I'm really not sure where the misunderstanding came in place, that this district does not value, this district and this board does not value sustainability. In fact, we will have a science and sustainability education coordinator position that will exist in this district. So, the fact that the confusion that that position won't exist, I'm not sure where that came from, but essentially, the reason that we will have that position is because we want to make sure that we are teaching our students through science, through our curriculum and instruction, as you mentioned earlier, we have the value in accordance of teaching students about sustainability and climate change, and so, having a science and sustainability education coordinator allows us to teach everybody within our organization about sustainability and climate change. So, I just want to name that, because I'm not sure where the reductions that we're doing in the district, where it came that we're not going to have a sustainability coordinator, but we value that position and want to make sure that we're educating our young people to understand sustainability and climate change. It's a reimagining of the position, to include a broader scope than what it does now.
Can we ask questions or not?
Does that drive the process, or like, we're just trying to help clarify.
Do we need a clarifier?
Yeah.
Because I feel like the position now is also more like concrete things, like bulbs and compost.
Facilities based, and this means facilities and that.
There would still include the facilities base.
Absolutely, yeah. It's a broadening of the position.
It's not just following a specific coordinator. It's not.
It's not.
It's still educating people about sustainability and climate change.
It's a new job description that I've never had.
Is the present occupant of the sustainability coordinator position, for you apply for that position? Or are they encouraged to apply for that position?
We made that very clear.
We made that very clear. So, that's why I'm not sure where the confusion is coming from.
And then, if I could just address the why Friday at 3:00? We were supposed to vote on this Monday, and it became clear to our attention that if we voted on it Monday, it would possibly be a problem for any of our honorably discharged employees to have it on their record that way later when they apply for other jobs, but by giving them a chance this week to be informed and then choose to resign or not, then they, it had some more power in what was happening, set them the next steps. So, we volunteered to come and make an extra meeting on a Friday, so that we could more ethically give them their respective dignity in the process. So, it's not a sneaky 3:00 Friday, it's actually an extra commitment from all of us to make sure that our people are taken care of.
I figured that was the case, so thank you. But I'm giving it.
And I'm saying.
Sorry.
We are absolutely looking into more questions and conversation on this topic, but we have a couple things to vote on.
Yeah. After we get to this, you can ask.
Next is the resolution authorizing the non-renewal of administrative contracts and honorable dismissal of administrators and no. I believe that the Board of Education adopted a resolution authorizing the non-renewal of administrative contracts and honorable dismissal of administrators and no.
Second.
Melvin?
Yes.
Salem?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Motion passes forward through. Next, the resolution authorizing reduction in force of education support personnel is noted. I believe that the Board of Education adopted a resolution authorizing reduction in force of education support personnel is noted.
Second.
Melvin?
Yes.
Salem?
Yes.
Lindsay Ryan?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Motion passes forward through.
So, because of all of them, we can't all talk to one, so we will allow the questions. This is very typical, but, and then I want to say that probably many of these conversations are administratively answered, and so, if Felton decides that she would rather address that a few emails later, that's her right to do so.
We admire that.
Yes, we appreciate you.
So, was this a job description?
Get those out of this.
You have a question, sir.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, so you are dismissing Karen Beretta, the existing sustainability coordinator for District 65, is that right?
We can't discuss the direct names and personalities, there's a whole order of people being honorably discharged.
Okay, forgive me, and you are creating a new position with, it appears to be possibly double the set of responsibilities, including facilities and education and curriculum, with a commensurate increase in pay?
I think, I think what we need to understand is the facilities aspects of this work, the sustainability work, will still happen, and it will get done. This position we're talking about is the science and sustainability education coordinator for the education of sustainability and climate change within the organization. I can't talk to you further about that, I could just let you know, we are going to make sure that all aspects of sustainability and climate change gets done in this district.
Okay, so clarify a question along those lines then. So, from a budget standpoint, since this is in the context of a budget reduction, right? From a budget standpoint, is the investment budgetarily in salary or whatever, that, et cetera, the same in the going-forward budget as it was in the past year's budget? Is it the same, is it less, is it more?
I'm not really sure what your question is asking.
Okay, let me try again. So, you spend a certain amount of money on sustainability coordination at the facility level today, in salary and costs, expenses, and so on and so forth. If you, if I were to compare this past year's budget to your proposed next year going-forward budget, is it the same amount of money being spent, but under a kind of a rearrangement of who gets that money or where that money is invested, or is it lower, or is it higher? Is that clear?
Yes.
So, is there an answer?
Yes, it's the answer. So, it's not less.
It's not less? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's interesting. I was just going to ask, is there, will there be a period where there will not be someone in any sort of full-time sustainability staff position at the district? No. So, there will not be, I think sometime in June is when the current position ends, and at that time, the other position will have been filled? Okay, thank you.
There's not.
Thank you.
Can we see this job description?
It will be posted.
It'll be on. It's not online yet.
There's a order of things, right? We have to inform people, we have to vote, and then we can all those jobs before that process.
So, I just heard about this an hour ago, since everybody's, I'm trying to find where we would have been notified that this actually meeting was going to happen, what I should watch, I was very busy working the election, and a few other things, or how, what should I have seen to have been notified that this was happening?
So, meeting notices are posted on the District 65 website, they're posted on the District 65 calendar, and then the special board meeting, you can also sign up for notifications, that's an extra step that District 65 takes, is you can sign up and you'll get email notifications.
So, pretty much I'm wrong, but those are like, you leave those are the places I checked, and I'm not in the seat or, I don't know.
If you check on our agendas website, you'll be able to see that, and I do believe there are.
It would also happen when you check it, just decided on it when you realize that we popped up.
So, if there's turnover in this position in June, how will you ensure that there's continuity between what the previous sustainability coordinator has been working on and what the next one will be?
Yeah, our goal is to have this position posted by April 15th, and begin the process for the hiring of a person, to ensure the continuity.
Yeah, once that person is hired, you know, if there's a set of projects that the previous person has been working on, how are we going to ensure that there's no kind of backtracking on those, or no adjustment period in that year, that next person's able to, you know, start the job in stride?
Yeah, we'll make sure that all of the projects get done, but right now, we're kind of going into personnel stuff, and I don't want to talk personnel, that's inappropriate for me to engage in that conversation.
So, I know there has been a science coordinator, right, for a while now, and so, it does feel a little bit like rolling this into an existing position, but the other piece is that this is a cross-curricular topic, and I know that from teachers, that they get 40 to 50 minutes a week to even teach science, and many of them are not comfortable teaching science and limit their engagement, so I'm not so happy about it being solely science-focused because there are ways to, you know.
I think what we're committed to is continuing the sustainability and education here in the district, and ensuring that that is taught within our curriculum and instruction right now, and so, I don't want to go back and forth or debate about that. Right now, we're going to make sure that... Right now, we're going to make sure that that is prioritized and it's from educating people around sustainability and climate change here in this district.
I think probably, yeah, I think probably we have shared what we can share, it's appropriate in this space, you can follow up with emails, asking more specific things, but obviously we can't talk directly about personnel and individual people. Um, so with no further business, I move that the Board of Education adjourn at 2:31.
Second.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.